Okay, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, April 23rd to order if we could please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Looks like two months in a row, we've got a nice big crowd. Do we need some recognition? Can I have a roll call, please?
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Bradson.
Here.
Alex Jeller colleague.
Here.
Pat Gertie.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt. Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Bill Rassler.
Here.
Okay, so we note for the record Karen Lundstedt is missing this evening. Our agenda, we will have two education, actually three education presentations this evening. First will be from our District 128 Foundation for Learning. We will recognize some students from both Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools, and then a brief Writers Week presentation. A very brief President's Report, we'll have updates from our school board representatives from both schools. Superintendent's Report, we'll approve the consent vote agenda, then review the Program and Personnel Committee and Facilities and Finance Committee. There is a brief Property Committee update, really nothing from Special Education District of Lake County or Illinois Association of School Boards, and then we will be convening an executive session this evening to review employment of employees and negotiating matters. We will not be taking any action after that executive session. All right? Anything else? All right, so Dr. Lee, I'll turn it over to you for the District 128 Foundation for Learning.
Great, thank you, Dr. Gertie. We've had the great pleasure as part of our District 128 Strategic Plan and our third strategic plan goal, maintain the financial stability of the district, of working with a group of people who have been instrumental in starting a foundation for District 128 to enrich and enhance student learning opportunities. And that foundation has done incredible work in its short existence, and we're very excited tonight to present to you the Chair of the District 128 Foundation for Learning to provide us some more information, and I'd like to invite to the microphone former District 128 Board President and Board Member and current President of the Foundation, Anne Langrath. Anne?
Thank you very much, Dr. Lee. Good evening, everyone. It's sure nice to be back. I've missed you all, and nice to see you. Thank you for allowing me to update you on the District 128 Foundation for Learning. I'll say a couple of the same things that Prentice did, but I'm sure you don't mind the repetition. As you know, the foundation was established in 2007 with support from the Board of Education as well as the administration, and in keeping with the district's strategic plan for this financial stability of the district. Our vision is to give opportunities to our students and staff to enrich and enhance the educational opportunities in the classroom across the curriculum, in fine arts, and in athletics. We believe that our students will face a complex world after graduation, and we feel we can never do enough to prepare them for it. We accomplished this goal by starting the foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit organization, and we fund ideas submitted by our staff. Each year since 2008, we have received applications for innovation grants. Through a blind process, a large committee made up of foundation members, administrators, teachers, community members, and parents review these applications we have received, and we recommend funding for a number of them. You received handouts over the weekend showing you the various kinds of grants that we have given out. You will see that we started out rather modestly in 2008, providing $4,400 in grant money for five innovative ideas submitted by staff members. As you see through the following years, as we have been able to raise more money, we have been able to provide funding for more projects and grants, culminating in the past November when we were able to fund 10 innovation grants for a total amount of $20,438. Over the five years of existence of the foundation, we have funded over $69,000 of creative ideas to bring more learning opportunities to our schools. We have plans to continue these innovation grants, and we are looking for other ideas to enrich the education of our students. In particular, with the explosive use of technology in all aspects of the curriculum, we wish to make available more funding to meet the demand of our staff. We have had a very exciting year for the foundation. The foundation is certainly growing and branching out. We have reached the $100,000 level in our endowment fund, which will afford additional funding through our investments. We held our very first ever public event with a dual purpose of fundraising and elevating awareness of the foundation's existence. We held what this event was called a Lace Up for Learning 5K Run Walk on Memorial Day last May. We were pleased to have over 300 runners and volunteers attend the Old School Forest Preserve, making it a smash success and raising over $12,000. As way of advertisement for the foundation, I wish to announce that we are hosting the second annual Lace Up for Learning 5K Run Walk on Memorial Day, Monday, May 28th, to be held again at the Old School Forest Preserve on St. Mary's Road. It is a wonderful way to support the program sponsored by the foundation, and a nice start to the Memorial Day festivities with your family. The event will feature food, which is always a good thing, prizes, raffles, and more. Sign up couldn't be easier. You just visit www-signmeup.com/d128laceupforlearning, and you can easily sign up. Information is also on our website so that you can sign up, and you can navigate to the, from the district's website to our website. You just click on the Foundation tab. The cost is $30, and it's free to current LHS and VHH students, and I hope you hear that. We would like to have some runners come up to the schools. I am hell happy to reveal that we are having a second event this year. It will be a wine tasting at Cafe Paradis Restaurant in Libertyville on Friday, November 9th, and more details on this event will be coming in the fall. As you can imagine, the foundation does not operate without the service of dedicated trustees and the adminis, and our administrators. Our Superintendent, Dr. Lee, and Mary Toddrick serve on our board, and District Office Staff Person Carol Skodin helps with the many clerical responsibilities, and we thank them for their support. We are always looking for volunteers to help with our events, and we are also seeking new trustees for the board. So if any of you would like to volunteer, or know someone who may be wanting to volunteer, please contact me. And finally, I would not be much of a foundation trustee if I did not take this opportunity to appeal to you to consider donating annually to the foundation. Many of you have already contributed, and it's much appreciated. It has been so rewarding to fund these enterprises in our schools. Each March, Dr. Lee hosts a Superintendent's Breakfast to celebrate our donors. At these events, we have had teachers who have received foundation funding present to the group how their grant made a difference in their classroom. These presentations have been enlightening and made our donors excited that their contribution is making such an impact at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. I invite you to join them. It's really easy. You can donate via our website. Thank you so much for your time, and does anybody have any questions? Thank you, thank you.
Pam, before we move on, I want to say to Anne and all of our former trustees, just done an amazing job in growing that foundation from nothing to be up to an endowment of $100,000 now, having given out the amount of money that you have to support really high-quality teaching that directly impacts our kids. We're just forever thankful to you, and I have the great pleasure every month of sitting with these folks at their foundation board meetings. An amazing group of people, so thanks again to the foundation for your support of the district.
Okay, next, District Service Awards for Vernon Hills and Libertyville High Schools.
The board will recall, last month, we had quite a group here, impressive group of accomplishments by our students, and in a short period of time, one month, we have another large group of equal significance of accomplishment. And so, we'd like to recognize the students and their parents for the accomplishments they've gained over this past year, and we're going to start with Libertyville High School and Dr. Scott.
Well, Dr. Scott is walking up to the microphone. Before people start moving out, this is one of the great evenings for the board and the administration, and celebrating all of their success. But we also want to take a minute and ask all the parents and family members here to stand up. As bashful as you are, please stand, and let's give you a round of applause for your tremendous contribution. Thank you. We appreciate your participation.
It's a pleasure to honor our students here tonight. We get to honor them back in the schools, and I know all state competitors come through to do for their competition, because there is an applied aspect of this too, and they my office, so I get to honor them personally, but it's so nice to present them to the board said, "Oh, we just need to take this test, Dr. Scott." Well, I can only imagine what that test is like, and they all fared excellent in that members tonight once again. My first sponsor this evening is Mr. Mark Busing, and he sponsored the Academic Decathlon. test, and I'm going to call forward, call back for Giovanna Andrajovic, Matt King, and Just a couple of years back, he shared with me he'd like to start this organization at Stefan Markovic, who play second, fourth, and third in the Academic Challenge State Libertyville. He said, "You know, I think we can make a go of it. This is a really cool idea." Finals of WISE. And who am I to argue with the man who has 100 kids running on his cross-country team? Come forward. (Applause). a group from Vernon Hills as well this evening, very successful from our district, and representing And they asked for Mr. Dawson, who could not be here tonight. So he's going to tell you a little bit about the Academic Decathlon. them tonight is Loretta O'Day.
I was very appreciative of getting a chance to restart the club.
It is my pleasure to introduce the winners for Vernon Hills High School, and before
It had been on hiatus for a number of years, and I have four members of that team with
Unfortunately, we don't have any of our students here today, but we had four students out
me today.
of five qualify for Nationals this year.
John Schuler, Sebastian Clavico, and Nina and Yovana Andrajovic.
Kathleen Morris took first place in Business Plan. Nishad Padke took first place in Desktop Application Programming.
And also on that team were Rod Ariola, Maggie August, Manny Bardina, Adam Grabowski, and
Manny Bardina took first place in Help Desk, and Daniel Zhao took second place in Computer
Chris Lamplin.
Problem Solving.
I wanted to mention them.
So, we will be going to Nationals this upcoming summer in San Antonio, so I'm looking forward
We took third in state in a competition that features 10 different academic disciplines
to seeing how they place in Nationals.
where students compete in GPA categories, which is a unique way to stage the competition. But it was certainly a great team.
we start, I just want to say, great congratulations to all the kids here tonight, but also want
I enjoyed coaching them, and we had a lot more success than I've ever had coaching
to just congratulate our sponsors that do such a great job.
cross-country. (Applause).
From fine arts to clubs and to sports, all these outside sponsorships and coaches that they do, they just really put in a terrific amount of time, and we're just so proud of all the accomplishments and what they give to our kids, so just wanted to acknowledge that. And we're going to start first with Beth Richards and Alicia Bood, who are our DECA sponsors, and they're going to talk about our DECA program and their trip to the Nationals now.
Good evening. Vernon Hills High School DECA members participated in the State Career Development Conference in Decatur last month. I am proud to introduce DECA members Aaron Bolonowski, Nevia Chaco, Gabriel Cotton, Lauren Grudy, Marjorie Krulenko, and Ratash Mishra, all who earned top places at state. This qualified them for the International Career Development Conference in Salt Lake City. State honors received by VHS DECA members were Lauren Grudy and Aaron Bolonowski placing first in the Entrepreneurship Promotion Plan Written Event. Marjorie Krulenko, Nevia Chaco, and Ratash Mishra placing third in Sports and Entertainment Marketing Operations Research Event. And lastly, Lauren Grudy, Aaron Bolonowski, and Gabriel Cotton placing fourth in the Financial Literacy Promotion Plan Written Event. Additionally, VHS DECA had the honor of having Lauren Grudy selected as a scholarship recipient from the Illinois Federation of Marketing and Education, who is in conjunction with the DECA organization. And lastly, all six of these members will be competing at the International Career Development Conference in Salt Lake City this next coming weekend.
Next, I'd like to introduce Amanda Carroll and Sean Cravere, who are going to talk about our FBLA accomplishments.
Vernon Hills FBLA had 43 students compete at the state competition in Decatur. They competed against 1,300 other students. The competition was March 30th and 31st. Of those 43, 18 qualified to compete at the national competition this summer, June 28th through July 3rd. They had to place top two in their event to move on to Nationals in San Antonio. Sean Cravere is going to introduce those students who were able to attend tonight.
Okay, so not in the order that they're standing, but in the order that we have the list here. The kids who qualified for Nationals and will be attending this summer in San Antonio are Sanchita Agarwal, step forward when I hear you, you're so good. Roz Ahmed, Christie Curry, Mark Jun, Josh Kalsaglass, I was told he was here, okay. We're going to have your sister stand in and start practicing. Thomas Lee, Priyanka Maitani, A.D. Molly, Udit Nanjia, and, Udit, stay there for a second, okay? That's Udit. Udit, as a result of his accomplishment, he not only gets to move on and compete at Nationals, but he's named, he was named the FBLA State Parliamentarian for the 2012-2013
All WISE members, if you could just come stand right here. Josh Ravenscraft, our sponsor, was unable to attend tonight, so I'm going to attempt
school year. They make that decision based on the score that they receive at state, and that honor goes to the highest-scoring non-senior at the competition.
to read his names. I'll do my best here. Let's go ahead and have the kids who are here tonight.
So Udit will be attending Nationals and also be serving on the state board next year for FBLA.
And if you could, when I read your name, just stand forward, okay?
Sasi Pandervada, Rajat Puranki, Nellie Rahimi, Matt Tabrizi, and Alex Zhang.
This was a fifth-place state finish for our kids, and they brought home some hardware for us, and we were really proud of their accomplishments. As I read your name, just come forward, and I'm going to name the top three place finishers in the state. Kathryn Bolos, Matt Gwynn, I don't think is here tonight, Mark Jun, David Kokic, second place in physics, Michaela Calverneran, I know that wasn't right, Eric Lang, third place in physics, Michelle Liu, Tyler Peterson, Beth Reiner, Alex Ravinsky, Victoria Steigerwall, Matt Tabrizi, Andrew Wang, and Justin Yim, who is a freshman who took first place in math. Congratulations. Congratulations to Justin and to all of our WISE guys. You did a really nice job this year. Thank you. And that concludes our student recognition.
Let's have one more big round of applause for everyone before we finish. Congratulations and thank you.
All right, thank you. Writers Week presentation.
Well, after spring break, students were excited to get back to Libertyville and get their spring break over with, because when they got back, it was week of Writers Week, which is the second annual event, and after the buzz from last year, the excitement was at its peak, and we have three of our staff members that are going to talk to you a little bit about the details of the, of that week. So I'll turn it over to them.
Hi, I'm Paul Reed, the supervisor of the English Department, and I kind of like books, so I figured the way to start off is talking about this book I'm reading right now, Daniel Pink's Drive. Anybody in the room familiar with Drive? I figured I know on the school board, got some business types, you know, so I figured we kind of bridge our two worlds, world of business, world of education. This is a great book. Mr. Cravere's here, probably knows Drive. He talks a lot about what makes work satisfying, intrinsic motivation, things like that, and he talks about three principles that make work satisfying. Talks about mastery, where you're working on something, time after time, you're just trying to get it right. It's really hard, but you just keep working at it, it's innately satisfying. Talks about autonomy, this is where kind of bosses and managers get out of your way, and they let you do the job the best way you know how, and then purpose. You do something that's satisfying, it makes a difference in a kind of a global way, you're serviced to others, makes a larger impact. I talked about those three things, because I think Writers Week is a pleasure for me to be a part of, because these three things are working together. Daniel Pink talks about this creates a state of flow. You get in the zone, you feel good, time passes quickly, can't really get interrupted, you're just feeling great. These are two people, the Writers' Work Team, that I think are part of Writers' Week, because they experience flow working on this project. When it comes to mastery, Anne came to me with this idea a couple of years ago, and she would bring in speakers and, you know, for the kids to meet, but it's maybe a period here, period there. She's like, "Hey, this person just wrote a book, let's bring them in. English teachers can meet, you know, can have their kids meet this writer, or here's a slam poet, wouldn't it be great if they could hear this guy perform?" And over the years, it's grown. So, it's fun to see how mastery's a part of this project, because this project just gets bigger and bigger and better and better. Now we're up to four days, periods one through eight, everybody from the whole school can come down, and, and these guys are already talking about, "How's it going to be better next year? How can we keep improving?" Autonomy's my favorite part, because I just get out of their way and let them do their work, and they have lots of ideas, and their satisfaction and love for this thing just comes from inside them, and a passion for what they're doing. And then when a purpose is great, I think there's a few purposes they accomplish at Writers' Week. One is they just want to give kids a platform to share their love of art with their peers. So they'll read poems, they'll show videos, they'll read stories they've written. They also expose kids to the real world of the writers, the writer's craft. So every teacher, I think, wants to sort of bring, to bridge their classrooms to the real world. What these guys accomplish at Writers' Weeks, they bring real, the real world into the school. So we've got screenwriters, poets, writers of nonfiction, and biographies, and history, and college professors come in and they talk to the kids. And then another great thing about the purpose is it's building wide. All disciplines can come down and participate, but anyway, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but this is a great book, Drive. And these, this is Craig Schmidt, and this is Anne Leckie. There's two other really important members of the team that couldn't make it tonight, Mary Kay Polzin and Diane Naslin. This is Craig.
Thanks. Actually, there's one really little thing I need to add. We did, we're very pleased with the way the event worked this year. One of the things that Paul, I don't think Paul mentioned that is very important, is that we actually have our student writers present at the beginning of each period, and we try to get as many different students up there onstage as they can, presenting their own creative writing, poetry, or perhaps a short piece of fiction to however many students are in the auditorium, and in some cases, that was something four, 500 students. And so that's wonderful, because the students who are in the audience see their peers up there onstage, and that's probably more motivating, we've found, anyway, by talking to students afterwards, that is more motivating for them than actually seeing the, well, at least often it's more motivating than seeing the adult presenters who we bring into the school. They see their peers doing it, and they think, "Wow, that is amazing, I respect that, I wish I could do that, maybe I can." And so that really seems to be a motivator for the students. Certainly will continue that in the future. We also want to thank several groups and people who made this possible. We don't really have a set budget, and so we just try to talk our program up quite a bit. Want to take a look?
Yeah, I'd like to thank our student newspaper, Drops of Ink, and Parrot Cats, and the Libertyville High School Library. They've been very helpful, and of course, Paul, for entertaining all kinds of ideas. And Dr. Scott really got behind this from the get-go, and I don't believe it would have happened, you know, it would not be as well-rounded a, an event, really, without her support. It really matters, you know, that people get behind ideas whose time has maybe come, so I think that that's a big part of it. And I have to concur with Craig, I think it was, it was incredible to see students get up there, but also, there's a recognition on their part that when they see a writer who's really inspired and, you know, conveying their life's work, in your head, you think, "You know, I could do this. I can do this thing." And I think what was our little motto? Changing, changing the world one word, one word at a time, and it is one word at a time. And also NHS helped us, and Mike, oh, and the District 128 Foundation for Learning. Thank you very much. We, yeah.
The foundation gave us a grant, and we were able to bring in a world champion of slam poetry. He was fantastic. The kids loved him, the teachers loved him. We hope to bring him back some other time, not next year, because, you know, but we hope to bring him back. He was fantastic. Buddy Wakefield, too.
But writing, writing is important, you know, English departments are the biggest departments in schools.
It's really hard, but you just keep working at it, it's innately satisfying. Talks about autonomy, this is where kind of bosses and managers get out of your way, and they let you do the job the best way you know how. And then purpose, you do something that's satisfying, it makes a difference in a kind of a global way, you're service to others, makes a larger impact. I talked about those three things, because I think Writers Week is a pleasure for me to be a part of, because these three things are working together. Daniel Pink talks about this creates a state of flow, you get in the zone, you feel good, time passes quickly, can't really get interrupted, you're just feeling great. These are two people, the Writers Work Team, that I think are part of Writers Week, because they experience flow working on this project. When it comes to mastery, Ann came to me with this idea a couple of years ago, and she would bring in speakers and, you know, for the kids to meet, but it's maybe a period here, period there. She's like, hey, this person just wrote a book, let's bring them in, English teachers can meet, you know, they can have their kids meet this writer, or here's a slam poet, wouldn't it be great if they could hear this guy perform? And over the years, it's grown. So it's fun to see how mastery's a part of this project, because this project just gets bigger and bigger and better and better. Now we're up to four days, periods one through eight, everybody from the whole school can come down, and these guys are already talking about, how's it going to be better next year? How can we keep improving? Autonomy's my favorite part, because I just get out of their way and let them do their work. And they have lots of ideas, and their satisfaction and love for this thing just comes from inside them, and a passion for what they're doing. And then when a purpose is great, I think there's a few purposes they accomplish at Writers Week. One is they just want to give kids a platform to share their love of art with their peers. So they'll read poems, they'll show videos, they'll read stories they've written. They also expose kids to the real world of the writers' craft. So every teacher, I think, wants to sort of bridge their classrooms to the real world. What these guys accomplish at Writers Weeks, they bring the real world into the school. So we've got screenwriters, poets, writers of nonfiction, and biographies, and history, and college professors come in and they talk to the kids. And then another great thing about the purpose is it's building wide. All disciplines can come down and participate. But anyway, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but this is a great book, Drive. This is Craig Schmidt, and this is Ann Leckie. There's two other really important members of the team that couldn't make it tonight, Mary Kay Polzin and Diane Naslin. This is Craig.
Thanks. Actually, there's one really little thing I need to add. We were very pleased with the way the event worked this year. One of the things that Paul, I don't think Paul mentioned that is very important, is that we actually have our student writers present at the beginning of each period. And we try to get as many different students up there onstage as they can, presenting their own creative writing, poetry, or perhaps a short piece of fiction, to however many students are in the auditorium, and in some cases, that was something four, 500 students. And so that's wonderful, because the students who are in the audience see their peers up there onstage, and that's probably more motivating, we've found, anyway, by talking to students afterwards, that is more motivating for them than actually seeing the, well, at least often it's more motivating than seeing the adult presenters who we bring into the school. They see their peers doing it, and they think, wow, that is amazing, I respect that, I wish I could do that, maybe I can. And so that really seems to be a motivator for the students. Certainly will continue that in the future. We also want to thank several groups and people who made this possible. We don't really have a set budget, and so we just try to talk our program up quite a bit. Want to take a look?
Yeah, I'd like to thank our student newspaper, Drops of Ink, and Parrot Cats and the Libertyville High School Library. They've been very helpful. And of course, Paul, for entertaining all kinds of ideas. And Dr. Scott really got behind this from the get-go, and I don't believe it would have happened, you know, it would not be as well-rounded an event, really, without her support. It really matters, you know, that people get behind ideas whose time has maybe come. So I think that that's a big part of it. And I have to concur with Craig, I think it was incredible to see students get up there, but also, there's a recognition on their part that when they see a writer who's really inspired and, you know, conveying their life's work, in your head you think, you know, I could do this, I can do this thing. And I think what was our little motto? Changing the world, one word at a time, and it is one word at a time. And also NHS helped us, and Mike, oh, and the District 128 Foundation for Learning. Thank you very much. We, yeah.
The Foundation gave us a grant, and we were able to bring in a world champion of slam poetry. He was fantastic. Kids loved him, the teachers loved him. We hope to bring him back some other time, not next year, but we hope to bring him back. He was fantastic. Buddy Wakefield, should I?
But writing is important, you know, English departments are the biggest departments in school. Students take English every year they're in high school, and it's intrinsic. I mean, having good writing skills is really important, no matter what discipline that a student decides to be a part of. It's really important, and it is exciting, and it is art. And we had fun.
And they finally learned that English is exciting during Writers Week. Yes.
They did, and English teachers remember why they became English teachers.
Yes, for that week.
Yeah. But thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief items. Friday and Monday, I had the Libertyville Club Committee interview students for next year's school board decisions. And as is often the case, it's just a remarkable day. I spent Friday morning here in Vernon Hills, and I spent this morning at Libertyville. And I thought I would share with you some of the things that I had. One of our favorite questions is, we like to ask the kids, how would they describe either Vernon Hills or Libertyville High School to, you know, somebody that was coming to visit, or they were talking to a friend? And you would be amazed how many times you hear about the schools being welcoming, caring, excellent academics, supportive teachers, it's almost a unanimous phrase, no matter who we ask, a place where you can feel safe. Someone also highlighted that they were part of the North Suburban Conference thing in the summertime, and they said, you know, we talked to some of the other people there, and we really realized that not all the schools are like ours. So just a tremendous amount of very, very positive things, and it's just very rewarding to hear that from the students and the things that they say. So it's also nice to know how much they appreciate all the hard work that goes behind the scenes to make it all happen. You might notice also that Christian's not here tonight. Normally, we have two people from Libertyville. He was tied up with AP Government and Wind Ensemble, so that's important. We lost him about midway through the interviews today, not knowing for sure what was going on. But he came back extremely excited, because he's going to prom with Erin Gray.
We were going to ask her on that.
That was, yeah, we told him he had a very creative thing at the band room. It apparently worked out well for him. We told him if he needs to be even more creative next year, or not next year, but we could have offered him the camera, and he could have asked her to go to prom on camera, so.
That was a perfect.
Yeah, so we wish Christian all the best. All right, Superintendent, he really didn't think I was going to do that.
I can't wait to tell him.
And now it's on TV.
Yes, and now it'll run for 30 days on cable TV.
Sometimes people think of me for just doing routine, so.
I think Erin is the one who's watching. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that, Erin. Superintendent's Report.
Okay, first of all, tonight, if it's possible for us to have more good news this month, we do. So very excited to share some additional good news with the board and our community tonight. Each year, the University of Illinois Alumni Association announces its Senior 100 honorary, recognizing 100 seniors for their leadership and achievements on campus and outside of the classroom. Of this year's 100, who were chosen from more than 9,000 seniors, three are Vernon Hills High School graduates. Congratulations to Kelsey Gugliami, Billy Trabrizi, and Josh Brickman. And I noted to Ellen today in an email that I recall them all as leaders when they were at Vernon Hills as well. So that's really exciting when you think about the number of students that are down at U of I. It's just great news we received today. VHHS senior Kate Lee, I think we know her, don't we? Oh, Kate, was recently invited to sing on Chicago's classical radio station WFMT 98.7 FM. Her performance will be broadcast on 98.7 this Saturday, April 28, at 11:00 a.m., and again on Thursday, May 3, at 10:00 p.m. In addition to singing, Kate will also be talking about her experience in Vernon Hills in fine arts. Okay, we really look forward to that. That'll be exciting. We need to tape that, definitely.
It'll be online.
Great. Community High School District 128 has received the Association of School Business Official Internationals ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. The award is given in recognition of having met or exceeded the program's high standards for financial reporting and accountability. District 128 received the recognition for its comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, for the fiscal year ending 2011. This is the 15th consecutive year District 128 has received this honor. So yes, congratulations to you and your staff, and everybody that works with you on the finance area. District 128 Director of Communications Mary Todrick was elected president-elect of the Illinois chapter of the National School Public Relations Association, or NSPR, for the 2012-13 school year. Mary will assume the presidency in 2013-14. Congratulations, Mary. It's quite an honor. LHS student Akil Kamath was the highest-scoring student in the nation on the March Before You Graduate Black History Challenge, and won a $250 college scholarship. So congratulations to Akil. LHS student Noah Strong was a first-place winner in the Libertyville American Legion Essay Contest on Americanism. He received a $50 check, and his essay was sent to the district level of the competition. The District 128 Special Olympians are state-bound once again. Seven of the athletes qualified for the state summer games by winning gold medals in their division in bocce ball at the competition held yesterday. The gold medal athletes are Nick Zachary, Ellie Goldberg, Trevor Furman, Michelle Shepley, Austin Josenhaus, Ann Jennings, and Val Pekina. So that's just really exciting, and we will have our Special Olympians here, I think, in May or June to do a yearly wrap-up with them, and that's always exciting as well. The VHHS WISE team and Coach Josh Ravenscraft took fifth place at state competition held at University of Illinois in Champaign. Along with the team's fifth-place finish, the following individuals took on gold medals for placing in the top six of their events. Senior Matt Gwynne was fifth place for physics. Senior David Koshy was second place in physics. Sophomore Michaela Kunwaranun was fourth place in biology. Senior Eric Lang was third place in physics. Junior Michelle Liu was sixth place in English. Senior Beth Reiner was sixth place in physics. And freshman Justin Yim was first place in math. And senior Tyler Peterson was sixth place in engineering graphics. The LHS academic decathlon team placed third in the state among more than 30 teams competing on March 23rd and 24th at the University of Chicago. This is the highest finish ever for the academic decathlon team, eclipsing its previous best fifth-place finish in 2005. As noted earlier, the team is coached by Mark Busey. Forty-one VHHS students competed against 1,300 students in the Future Business Leaders of America state competition held recently in Decatur. VHHS had 28 students achieve top-10 recognition, 16 of which also qualified to attend the FBLA national competition in San Antonio on the River Walk this summer. The following team members received the following honors. Sanchina Argarwal, Matthew Trabrizi, and Nellie Rahimi were second place in business presentation. Afraz Ahmed was third place in introduction to business. Tanyaya Bardwaj was third place in website design. Hannah Chung was fourth place in parliamentary procedures. Kristy Curry and Ann Liebdezinski were first place in e-business. Amy Dolan was fourth place in personal finance. Mark June was second place in hospitality management. Josh Kozaglaz was second place in business law. Thomas Lee was second place in accounting, too. Andrea Lum, fifth place in digital video. Priyanka Megtani and Sashi Pandraghara were second place in business plan. A.J. Molly was third place in computer applications. A.D. Molly was fourth place in introduction to technology concepts. And Udit Nagia was second place in parliamentary procedures, and appointed to as Illinois State Parliamentarian. The VHHS FBL team is cosponsored by Amanda Carroll and Sean Kevir. The LHS FBLA members also competed at the 63rd Illinois Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference in Decatur. LHS FBLA members won the following individual competitive events. Kathleen Morris was first place in business plan. Manuel Bardina was first place in help desk. Nishad Foodke was first place in desktop application programming. And Daniel Shu was second place in computer problem solving. These students also advanced national competition in San Antonio this summer. LHS FBLA advisors are Loretta O'Day and Kristen Conley. The following art students had work selected for Student Perspectives 2012 Photo Exhibit. LHS Kaylee Borsha, Nora Budkovich, Lily Van Der Bosch from VHHS Bailey Clements, Elena Ratner, Rachel Roberman, and Brad Zlinger. The following art students were named winners in the 2012 Four by Five Art Show. They will be honored at a reception on May 2 at Front High School. From LHS, Jack Polnikoff, Samantha Julian, from VHHS, Jay Lee, Ann Ho, Olivia Weaver, Kelly Strums, Brad Zlinger, Jenny Alvaro, and Alyssa Burrows. The following VHHS student artists received Best of Show awards at the Great Frame-Up Lisa Show. Lizette Gonzalez, Tiffany Jean, Carol Ling, Ambern Ling, and Elena Ratner. Their work will move on to the Best of the Best Show in May. The following students were named Best of Show winners at the North Suburban Conference Art Show. From LHS, Casey Baling, Anna Barau, Katie Bookie, Crystal Duris, Kelly Jeffries, Jamie Kinston, Laura Long, L Orlando, Isabel Primer, Alexandria Swinson, and from VHHS, Alina Yufo, Sierra Carroll, Ambern Ling, Emma Brutman, Carol Ling, Amanda O'Rourke, Brittany Masloff, Marissa Melton, Ann Ho, and Val Bezclawetskaya. LHS student Brian Georgson was the winner of a new Chevrolet Aveo through the LHS Operation Click program. That was a new car he won. So they give one away every year, right?
I think that's three years in a row.
Three years in a row, Libertyville students won. It's pretty amazing. Christian Bader has been selected as the winner of a Seaman Scholarship pursuant to an agreement with the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Pretty impressive. The LHS math team placed third at the regional meet last month and qualified to compete at the state meet on May 5 at the University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign. In two short years, the LHS Science Olympiad team has risen to one of the best teams in Illinois. In 2011, as a first-year team, the LHS Science Olympiad team qualified for the state competition. They placed first in the A Division and 16th overall in the state. Saturday, April 14, the team earned a fifth-place overall trophy at the state competition at the U of I. The 2012 LHS Science Olympiad team includes Max Allen, Wes Allen, Adam Blythe, Charles Burnett, Rosanna Chin, Megan Harder, Marcellie Joseph, Heather Legan, Jasef Leave, Jason Leave, Kelly Lubers, Joey Nedlin, Erin Neal, Colleen Palicki, Michael Price, Connor Robinson, Goran Schlick, Patrick Slade, Tommy Waggoner, Colin Ju, and Jessica Yen. The team is coached by Ursula Ahern and Mary Allen. And that concludes tonight's very exciting good news report. The board will note that you had in your board pack a 2012-13 proposed committee and board meeting schedule. If you note on the updated version of this that we gave you to consider, and we're not asking you to vote on this night, tonight, come back, you can check your schedules, and we will see how this works. But we believe we have a conflict on our regular board meeting dates on Tuesday, May 28, 2013. That is usually the date for the Vernon Hills High School Athletic Awards Night. We often do a great deal of recognition in May. Be difficult to do that without the Vernon Hills students here, many of who will be involved in that. So we can look at a couple of options for that moving forward. One of those options would be Denise, I think, the 30th? We're looking at the 30th, right, as an option?
20th.
20th, I'm sorry. Yes, right, would be the Monday, May 20. Would be a possible option for us. So we can consider that and come back and take a look at that at a future meeting, okay? Just wanted to give you an early idea of what that might look like.
I heard a question on my board.
Yes.
One of them is on Veterans Day. Does that mean that we have to carry employees back and forth?
We generally, if it falls on a holiday, we can move that, if it falls on a Veterans Day.
It's not a problem for me, but I just want to make sure that our employees are...
Yes, we were the answer to your question, because it would be a deal. So generally, when we've had conflicts with the three-day holidays, we've, so you can take a look at an option for that as well, okay? Right, so we've got a kind of a working idea. All right, next on the superintendent's report this evening, we have our annual IHSA membership renewals for LHS and Vernon Hills High School. And we would, of course, recommend that the board pass those renewals, so we can take care of that. So we would ask for a motion and a second to any discussion.
Salute. Second. Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Danson.
Aye.
Joey Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Howard.
Aye.
Christian Caris.
Hey, great. Next on the superintendent's agenda this evening is a FOIA request. The board will note you had one FOIA request in your pack at this month. And we also had a donation acknowledgement. We want to thank Dr. Stanley D., who donated a miter saw utility vehicle, rigid model, AC 99401, to Libertyville High School Applied Technology Department. And that donation will be used to support our applied technology program. So thanks to Dr. D. Dr. D. lives in Lake Bluff. Also tonight, we want to take a minute just to do an update on our situation with our pools at this point. The board is aware, as I think the community is now from our communication, that the Libertyville High School program compliance plan was also approved by IDPH, and you will be considering a bid recommendation this evening to move ahead with that work. At this time, we're waiting for parts to be configured for the Vernon Hills pool, and also the Libertyville pool. As soon as we receive after tonight, as soon as we receive the parts, we'll be able to begin work on one of the two pools, and we will likely start work on the pool that we received the parts on first. They have to be fabricated. The actual fabricator is in Morton Grove, so we can actually drive down and get the parts and bring them back when they're ready. But those parts come from several suppliers, have to be put together by the manufacturer, and they're NACI certified as one component. So hopefully in the next week, week and a half, we're going to see some movement on parts, and then we're going to sprint to get that work done. So you'll consider that bid later this evening. And then under other, I just wanted to let the public know tonight, as I've updated the board in the past few days. Last week, I attended Congressman Bob Dold's Education and Manufacturing Roundtable, which was actually held right next door to our district office in this office park. It had about 150 representatives from manufacturing entities and educators. And the goal of that get-together was to help develop communications and connections and relationships between educators and manufacturers to have a better understanding of the opportunities that are available in manufacturing, and for the manufacturers to gain a better understanding of what we're doing to prepare our students for jobs in the manufacturing and business field. Also, it was to identify what is currently working in both sectors. And the third was to identify future possibilities of working together. And one of the things that was noted several times during the conference is there are several hundred thousand manufacturing jobs that are open in the depths of this economic climate we're in right now, that are going unfilled for lack of qualified people to take the positions. So one of the conversations we had was the importance of some of the manufacturing associations, like the National Manufacturers Association, of working to market those opportunities nationally, so they raise the awareness of some of those positions. Those positions are highly skilled positions, they're well-paid positions, and in most cases, once an employee starts working with a manufacturing firm, they will continue to send them back to school to kind of keep up and move forward. The good news for our district is we're doing several leading-edge things right now, which were recognized that day. One of those things is seemingly very simple, but very important, is that we have business partnership groups at both of the buildings, where we're working with local businesses and manufacturing entities to develop those kind of partnerships. The other thing that leads to is our career fairs, that we alternate between the two schools. If you've ever been to either of our career fairs, it is amazing the variety, I think our students would agree, the variety of... our students would agree, the variety of possible professions, including manufacturing, that are there. So again, raising awareness about positions in the field. I think the other thing that the district has done is we have a very vibrant Applied Technology Program at both of the schools, as well as at the Lake County Tech Campus. I know Alex recently went to the open house there, and I think you were favorably impressed by the work and the possibilities for students there. So we're doing many of those things and building on many of those things that I think are really leading-edge for schools moving forward. The last thing that we've added at Libertyville, and I know we'll be considering at Vernon Hills at some point in the future, is we started Project Lead the Way, the pre-engineering program. We've added two classes, and we will continue to add classes in that program. I think it's been highly successful there. And again, is something that the manufacturers at the workshop actually commented on, the importance of high schools grasping that program in the future. And certainly for our engineers on the board, they see the merit in that. But I think we also see the merit in that pre-engineering preparation as well. And one of the things they noted there was that by students going through those types of programs, rather than thinking, "I want to be an engineer," really not knowing what that means. When they enter the college or university setting and they go into an engineering program, they really have a good idea of what engineering is about. And so they're likely to have more longevity in the program because they know what their vocation, they think their vocation is. So I think Congressman Dold is to be complimented, and everyone that attended there, he's planning on doing this a couple of times a year in the future. And I think it was a great first experience together. It was not what some people generally view as the relationship between schools and the manufacturing sector as a finger-pointing session. It was a very positive upbeat, certainly identified some great things to do in this area. The last thing, little tidbit that I'll leave you with tonight that actually surprised me, but do you know which congressional district in the United States has the most manufacturing activity of any congressional district in the entire United States? It's the 10th district here in North Cook and Lake County, which is really surprising. So we obviously have very vibrant manufacturing here, and we'll continue to work in partnership with them. So Pat, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll back up one agenda item for our student school board reps. Kate, can I start?
Sure. Reporting from Vernon Hills High School. Over spring break, our orchestra went to the Czech Republic, Austria, and Germany. And I saw plenty of beautiful pictures on Facebook, and it sounds like they had a wonderful time there. And classical music is extremely appreciated in Europe, much more than in America. And I hear all their audiences gave them standing ovations at every bunny they performed in. Last week, we had our CRC open house, and that was for juniors or sophomores who are interested in jump-starting their adventure to college. And it's interesting, the different atmospheres we feel when comparing the junior hallway to the senior hallway at this time of year. The junior hallway is full of people stressing out about college and the ACT they're going to be taking tomorrow. And the senior hallway is full of people not quite doing their homework and worrying about prom drama, so I thought that was kind of funny. We had our NHS inductions, and every NHS member is required to do 12 hours of community service per semester. And at the induction, we were told that as an entire group, we committed 1,400 hours to the community. And so it reminded me of the quote, "Nobody can do everything, but everyone can do something." And so by all of us committing a small amount of hours, we were able to give a lot back to our community. We had our choir opera concert, and this was the first time we sang opera at a fine arts event. And so it was really cool to give our community a taste of what opera sounds like. And opera is pretty much like musical theater and theater in like 400 years ago, so it was interesting to bring back the old days. And VH2O sponsored Rock the Courtyard, which was a concert in the courtyard. And we had a lot of Vernon Hills bands play at the event, and it was to raise awareness for the pollution and the environment. And the money that was raised is going towards electric hand dryers in the bathrooms. And also, there's a little, I don't really know what it is, but it's a ball that was invented by two girls at Harvard. And when you kick it, it generates electricity. So by buying these balls, we're going to, they're going to donate it to a school in Kenya. And so the Kenyan school can kick the ball and play with it, and by doing that, they generate electricity, which is awesome. So yeah. And we had our last late start last Wednesday, and I would like to thank the entire board for deciding on the every Wednesday morning late starts, because those were awesome, and we are very sad to let those go. And we had Mr. Cougar last Saturday night, and the winner was Senior Joey Marsek, and he won by dancing to the Single Ladies Dance by Beyonce. If you guys are familiar with that, it's a very difficult dance, and he did amazingly. And there were a record of three boys who asked a girl to prom at Mr. Cougar last Saturday, and I took part in two of those asking, so that was a lot of fun. And so prom is just around the corner, and so is graduation, and it's, the year is going really, really fast, and I'll be sad to leave in a month.
Good, thank you, Dorica.
Yes, so like Kate said, our last late start for, well, seniors and freshmen and sophomores still have a late start this Wednesday, but those are severely missed. And the first Wednesday in May will definitely be a hard one, and some people may forget and show up late, but that's okay. I'd just like to start by touching on some of the things that have happened today earlier in this board meeting. And starting with Writers Week. I know that at our last luncheon, we talked a lot about the, what had happened at Writers Week, and it was, it was fantastic, better than last year. And like what the, what Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Malwackey touched on with the student pieces, those, we, I have so much respect for all of those students that went up there and shared their personal work. It was phenomenal, and they are, we have some extremely talented, talented people. So it was fantastic to see that. And then in the board interviews we had this morning, I was able to be a part of one this morning, and like Mr. Rudy said, when they were asked their, their perception of Libertyville High School, and I'm sure the same thing goes for Vernon Hills High School, is that excellence was a word that was used a lot. And it made me feel proud that I'm part of, you know, this amazing district, and it's possible because of everyone sitting at this table, and the teachers in the classroom, and the students. So I think we're very blessed to, to be where we are and to have the opportunities that we have in this district. And today, like, like last month, we had so many recognitions, and it's just amazing to see how many wonderful people we have here, and that's definitely part of that excellence. The Special Olympics with what Dr. Lee just reported on, the hockey ball, and I mentioned before that I had gym class with some of these kids, and they, I can't wait to hear tomorrow what, what they have to say, or Wednesday, I wasn't there today, but smiles, you know, they always bring in their medals, so it's always good to see them, you know, showing their pride. And when they come here for a presentation, you know, I'm sure that you all will be able to experience that as well. And also, the special needs kids on Mondays and some Fridays do a slogan of the day along with the announcements. So they have these little slogans, motivational things that they say every day to the student body, which is very neat for them. Now to school. We had a health fair recently, and that was, it was in the main gym, and there's, I want to say 20-something different, yeah, maybe more, different exhibits or presentations that were available. And so it was really cool to see, especially for those students looking to get into the health field, a lot of opportunity, a lot of information there. Christian is not here tonight, but he did want me to mention that the Wind Ensemble Superstate Performance is early in May, so they're all looking forward to that. And the orchestra recently went down to play in downtown Chicago, and I know Dr. Scott, you were there, if you wanted to say anything about it.
I'm just, exactly right. It was just really, just to hear the acoustics, the choir together, the orchestra.
Yeah.
And it was, I told him I could, I had to focus on listening, because everybody around me was hoping to, I was sitting in the student section, so that was cool.
Yeah. And one thing that I just found out this past week was that in our total body fitness gym class, which is a girls' class, they did a triathlon, like a mini-triathlon during the day. And the win, I don't know what the winner received, but I thought that was an excellent idea to have, you know, mini-triathlon. I believe it was six laps in the pool, a mile run, and I think a seven-mile bike ride. So that was really neat and exciting, and a great, definitely a great opportunity. Last Wednesday morning, some of us woke up early and forewent our late start to do some AP bubbling of the Scantrons. And it was, I thought it was a great idea. Mr. Albin did a great job organizing and, and all the help that he had. I think that it definitely cut 25 minutes off of our AP tests that are coming up in two weeks, so some complaining, but I think that it was definitely very beneficial. PSAE is tomorrow, well, the ACT is tomorrow, and then the Work Keys and PSE are Wednesday morning for our juniors. Graduation speaker tryouts are this Wednesday. And the baseball team recently had a fundraiser at the Brewers game. Not sure who the Brewers were playing, but they all went up to Miller Park and sat, you know, in the same section, so that was a lot of fun for them. Today, I got an opportunity to go on a field trip with 17 other Libertyville students and then about 20 Vernon Hills students. And we went downtown to the Federal Reserve Bank. And as an econ nerd, I guess, just a little bit, I was so excited to walk into the Federal Reserve Bank and go up to the third floor and just see, see that building. I was so excited. We played financial football with Congressman Robert Dold and Bears player Lance Briggs. So Congressman Dold was on Vernon Hills' team, and Lance Briggs was on our team. So I got to sit right behind him, and he was our coach for, coached us through these financial questions. And we had a great time. We ended up tying at the end of the game, and there was no overtime to settle, so it was equal. So that was a lot of fun. We had, we got an opportunity to take pictures with Lance Briggs, and he was really gracious. A lot of the kids have Twitter, and so they were tweeting their pictures to him, and he retweeted them, which was really kind of him. Robert Dold stuck around as well for some photo opportunities. And we, I mean, we just had a great day. That two hours we were there were just filled with so much excitement and emotion, and the bus ride back was, was a total buzz, so that was really exciting. And yeah.
Okay, great, thanks very much. I might add that one of the other questions we asked the prospective school board reps was, what are the issues facing students? Or sometimes we twist it that a little way. If you could be Dr. Zwick or Dr. Scott for a day, what would you change? It wasn't exactly unanimous, but we heard several times. I would have late starts every Wednesday for the entire year. The other popular one was, if only we could have finals before the holidays. So food for thought. Okay, thanks very much. Invitation for public comment. Anybody from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent vote agenda. The consent vote agenda is listed and was reviewed in committee earlier in the month. If I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please. So moved for second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mattson.
Aye.
Kelly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chair Person Mauer.
Okay, we have several items here. The first item is, Mark does an action, but it is not an action, it's just informational, so we will not be taking action on that tonight. We just wanted to make everyone aware that we have not added coaching or activity positions for the last several years. However, student participation numbers have continued to grow in some sports and activities to the point that we really need to look at supervision and safety as they pertain to those activities. And so the district is considering adding some positions there for supervision. The district office will be meeting with the principals, athletic directors, and student activity directors in the coming days to review needs and then develop additional recommendations for next year. So we should all be looking forward to that. Any questions on that? Okay, the next item is Special Services Summer School Course, and that is a pilot for 2012. And so we're looking for a motion to approve that, that pilot. And what that is, is that the Special Services Department has proposed a summer school class for the special needs incoming freshmen called Essential Skills. And that is intended to improve reading, writing, and math skills for those students who are identified with need. They will also incorporate social and advocacy skills, so that these kids can become independent high school students. The anticipated enrollment at this time is between 12 and 14 students, and the specific course content would be tailor-made to, based on the student's individual IP. This course does align with the overall efforts to increase educational opportunities for all students in District 128. So a motion to approve that pilot?
That's so moved. Becca, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Mather.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, then the next thing we have is Blackboard Mobile License and Service Agreement. Yeah, I believe, Dr. Lee, you had asked to address the board.
That's correct, thank you. Thank you, Ellen. As the board will remember from our recent Program and Personnel Committee, Mary Tadrick and Mick Torres have done a significant amount of work on looking at the possibility of developing an app or application for District 128 that can be split off between the two buildings for LHS and Vernon Hills High School. And as we noted at the committee meeting, the app will allow us to aggregate numerous electronic resources, news and information, that parents, students, and staff access daily into a single application designed specifically for the small mobile wireless devices that almost everyone carries today. The app will support our strategic planned goal for enhancing communication with all stakeholders, and also supports our strategic planned goal for enhancing teaching and learning by supporting those objectives which specifically tie in, tie in an ubiquitous digital curriculum to small mobile devices that we carry, such as the integration of Google Apps and others. It is also cost-effective. It reduces the amount of money that we spend annually on printing costs associated with our news and curricular resources that are already available electronically, and it's timely. News and information will be pushed through the app to our stakeholders rather than having them receive news and information weeks after the news or events have occurred. We will roll out the app in multiple phases, which will give us room to grow into the 14 elements that are available with us. Again, the contract we're entering into is with Blackboard, which is, dominates this area. Certainly, certainly at the university level, they are looking to move into the high school market. This will make us one of the few high schools, certainly in the Midwest, if not the country that has the apps. But we see the potential for growth here is exponential and will be a cost savings for the district. We did note at the committee meeting that for those of us that are a little older than our students are, that we are still in a transition between the digital and paper, and that we're going to have to walk that line as, as we move forward. But we've also noted that many of our younger parents have grown up much more with technology, and maybe some of the folks in my generation. So we'll be mindful of that as we move this along, but we are recommending that you approve the agreement this evening, so we can move forward in May in working with Blackboard, and we can launch the app in the fall. Mary, do you have anything you want to add?
Just an interesting fact that I found before the meeting. There are more internet-capable phones than desktop computers in the United States. So 76% of American people have an internet-capable cell phone. So it's moving, and the numbers are going to grow.
So Dr. Mauer, we would ask you to...
Another thing that I just wanted to mention is that this is, it works with both platforms, both iPhone and Android, so it covers everything.
Actually, we're going to a third, and BlackBerry.
And BlackBerry.
And the iPhone app will work on your iPad as well.
Yes. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the Blackboard Mobile License and Service Agreement as presented.
Becca? Any discussion?
Can I, I just want to make one comment. I missed the board meeting a couple weeks ago, but just to applaud Mick Torres and the District 128 Technology Group, and Mary, and everyone involved with us. Again, it's a, another demonstration of being sort of leading-edge in thinking and really keeping an open mind to the different technologies that can be used to really engage our students and our faculty and community for that matter. I've seen... I've seen this effect, being effective at the college level, and I know how much, if any of us, if you have students, children at the college age, how well they receive this type of thing at that level. I think it'll be just as exciting to see this in action at the high school level, and it'll be exciting to see us out there on the leading edge demonstrating what this can be done, and having the other high schools calling us and saying, hey, can we learn from you? And that's just a great example of some of the skill and talent and horde that we have here.
When I know what Doreenka's thinking right now, she's gonna think at maybe our May luncheon that we're gonna let she and Kate and our student board reps test drive this first and maybe pilot it for us, and say they were first onto the app. So Jim, thank you for the comments.
All right, roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item we have, Board Policies. This is for a second reading and adoption. All 10 policies are listed. Nothing has changed between the last meeting and this meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to approve. Any questions?
I move to approve the second reading Board Policies. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second item up is looking for a motion to reject all of the bids for the LHS Roofing Removal and Replacement Project scheduled for the summer of 2012.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Fourth bid, looking for a motion to award the contract for the base bid site work to J.E.M. Morris of Big Rock, Illinois, for $519,193, and that they accept alternate number six, AstroTurf Game Day Grass 3D, in the amount of $407,600, making the total cost for the Vernon Hills Turf Athletic Field Improvements at Restolium Stadium at $926,793.
So moved. Second. Discussion.
Under our estimate and under our...
Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the last item is looking for a motion to apply for school maintenance project grant and the matching funds for District 128.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? What is this specifically for? I don't recall.
This is a grant from the state of Illinois to do any kind of maintenance project in our buildings. The only caveat here is that the Board of Education actually has that responsibility in the state.
Is this like the lighting project, or are these other...
No, this is different. It is specifically for maintaining the site in the building. This is unique in that this is only the second time that I'm aware of this stadium in the state of Illinois.
Okay.
We are applying under the lighting grant for...
Okay.
And then...
And what is the amount of money here?
The maximum that we can get is $50,000.
Okay.
All right. Oh, will they take the money back? If they don't have, if they can't pass the budget, are they gonna take the money back?
Well, we are putting in for projects that are approved.
Okay, so it's no, there's no loss, is it right?
Okay. Roll call, please.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Kelly Powell?
Aye.
Rudy?